That's what my, that's what my computers do to me, right? If I don't pay them, if I don't pay them attention, they just, they just shut down and then they're like, we'll take our time to come back on.
Right.
So how you doing?
I know how that goes.
How you doing, man?
I'm doing good. I'm doing pretty well, you know, staying pretty busy. And, you know, I had recently, I think, I would say completed my curriculum write-up for Jeet Kune Do and Kali, which means I've taken it to a level where I think the students, let me say maybe white belt to black belt kind of, they've, they've got a good hold of the system, right? And understand most of the concepts. And then I have instructor levels. They can walk away at level 10, but if they want to be an instructor, I actually teach them how to teach, encourage them to write lesson plans, give them templates, have them teach for me. And then essentially kind of call them out on the spot, teach this to me like I was a beginner. You know, and then give them feedback on that. So that's kind of the track that I'm going with the way that I want to develop people. Yeah. So it's been a lot of work, but it's rewarding.
So, you know, I was talking with Mike Massey, you know who he is?
Mike Massey?
Mike Massey from Martial Arts Business Daily.
Okay.
And, and we were, we were talking about the micro dojo concept.
And Micro dojo.
You're the person that came to mind. As soon, as soon, as soon as I, as soon, you know, when he described the setup, I go, that's what Randy does. It's right there in his garage. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. It's, hey, it's, it's low overhead, you know, it, it fits the group. I'd say when I get 10 people in here, I can't swing sticks. You know, if I have six, I can swing sticks. But if I have 10 in here, you know, we switched to other things. And, and, you know, just make do. When it's nice outside, I could teach 50 people, you know?
Yeah, right. I've seen, I've seen shots of you guys with like, I guess like the garage door open, you know?
Yes.
Yeah, that's cool.
Yeah. When we can tolerate the weather, we'll be out there. And I have a backyard that's actually like a forest preserve, which is really nice. And when we do our picnics, we've had archery out there, we knife throwing, um, you know, whip cracking, everything that we can do out there, plenty of room, you know?
Yeah.
It's a lot of fun.
My, my friend, Gi Anthony Joseph in Westminster, California, just sent a video of snow in California.
I know. That's, that's really weird. We've been going through these, uh, it's almost like, I think it was two weeks ago, we had a snowstorm. Okay. And the snow stuck around for two days and then it melted like completely. It was gone. And then we got hit with snow on Friday, this last week, Friday. And so I get up in the morning, knowing I gotta, I have to teach class. I got my shovel, I got my, my, uh, salt, you know, ready to make sure my students can get inside. I open up the door, there's no snow on the ground, it melted overnight. It's just, it gets weird, it gets cold enough. And then it gets warm.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, just too warm for the snow to stay. And I think we're supposed to have something like it this week. That's almost three weeks in a row with this crazy roller coaster weather here in Chicago. So.
Yeah. I mean, the same thing happened to him. He came out a few minutes later and the sun was out. And it had just been, it had just been snowing. Yeah. See, that's the problem with youth state. See here in Miami, we're cool, you know, we, we, we don't have that.
We're jealous. Don't, don't worry. We're jealous of you guys.
Yeah, we, we have that. We're, we're, we're getting, we're getting ready for the, the daily report to be few scattered showers at 3:00 PM. That's it.
There you go.
We'll have that, we'll have that for like six months and, and then, you know, right? So, um, so we set this up literally on the fly and
I appreciate that, by the way.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Anything I can do to help you guys with, with what you're doing. So the four Musketeers are suiting up again.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
And producing another, another of the notorious Chicago Summit.
Yes. So, uh, this will be the fourth one that we've done. We've had two Jeet Kune Do summits, one Kali summit, we did a year ago. And now we're doing our, our second Kali summit. The first one went really well. I didn't have four instructors for that one because I was, well, I kind of did. Larry Lindeman came in like one of the days to teach us some stuff, but I didn't really list him as a featured instructor because I didn't know I could get him.
That's not my end. Oops. It's down by you guys.
Okay. Sorry. A call came in. A call just came in and I'm late. I just put it to voicemail. Um, sorry about that. Uh, anyway. So, uh, Larry Lindeman has been a really great addition to what we've been doing. And if I can get him to come to our events, uh, it just worked out. It was like a last minute thing. I really didn't think I could get him. I'll be honest. And, you know, you know his history. I believe you've interviewed him in the past.
Yeah.
Uh, and it's so great. His energy's great. And then it, it was the time that I hired him for the last Kali summit. He, uh, you know, when I paid him, he's like, I would have done this for free. And I go, well, can I have the envelope back? No, but you know, I don't, you know, I, I love paying the instructors. I mean, they're totally worth it and, and they're
He's too, he's too popular a guy. Everybody's calling him. He's gonna have to put his phone on, what do you call it? Um, do not disturb or something. I'm sorting this out. Um, I wonder if, I don't see anything showing that we are live streaming on the YouTube. So I guess.
I just hate when that happens. Now I made it clear, I made it clear to stop calling me.
You're too popular.
Sorry.
You're too popular. That's what it is.
I wish, I wish. Uh, but anyway, you know, with being able to find, you know, these higher level instructors to make sure I can bring these people in. Uh, and, and what I mean by bringing them in is making sure that they're available. I don't have to fly anybody in. That's what I think the appeal of this is.
Right.
That I've not seen anybody else put these, this event together. Usually they fly in an instructor. And, you know, those seminars, maybe pre-COVID, were, were holding up pretty well. They're a little more difficult, I think, to fill out these days. Uh, meaning two days, three days of training unless you turn it into like an immersive event. Right? You know, you don't touch on, uh, five different martial arts. What you do is you touch on one art in the five or 10 or 12 areas, like 12 areas of Kali. And then you find the experts in those areas, like Larry Lindeman is excellent with weapons deployment under pressure and weapons retention. And it's something that I'm trying to strengthen. And when I saw that he had that, I go, we gotta, gotta have him there.
Yeah.
We have Joe Goitia back, who is, uh, he loves to keep his art simple. He's trained a lot, but he's like, simple works. Let's, let's go through and work that. He also spent time training with Ted Lukaku Kai and his father, you know, uh, many years ago in the eighties, that Joe had that exposure. So we're asking him to teach some of that stick boxing stuff that Ted Lukaku Kai used to do. And I'm really excited about that. And then of course we got Tim Tokar's coming back. He's gonna share his Kabhi Kabong, uh, with us. And I think that's always a good comparative analysis to kind of see how they do things. We get those, the drilling and it's just, uh, you know, different from the way we swing our stick and swords in the Filipino martial arts. So I think rounding that out has just given us a good list of instructors to make sure that we're offering real high quality to the attendees, you know? It's important to me.
Yeah. So, um, you know, to just a few minutes ago on the I Love Jeet Kune Do broadcast. So the, uh, the title today was Jeet Kune Do, um, classical versus non-classical or whatever, right? And, um, there was a comment, there's one, there's only one Jeet Kune Do, right? That was the comment. Yeah.
So, right. So I saw, I know, I saw, I know, I know who said it too.
Okay, right?
So we don't need to say, but I, I get it. Yeah.
So let's pretend, right? Let's pretend that you or I actually care that somebody will say, wait, it's the Jeet Kune Do dialogues and they are talking about the upcoming Chicago Kali summit. Let's pretend that we actually care, care about that, right?
Yeah.
Right?
Um, yeah.
What, what, but more, on a, on a more serious note, what is the role that, that you would say for you colleague plays in your Jeet Kune Do? For lack of a different expression.
Right. Uh, so often when I'm teaching, if I have my JKD class, Jun Fong class, right? And then that's for 45 minutes and then I'll teach Kali for 45 minutes. And sometimes Kali gets pushed aside because we're trying to finish a concept in JKD. So I don't mean the whole class. We'll run it a little late, five, 10 minutes or something. But I separate the art, okay? In that regard, so that I am giving them what, the way that I was taught, the Jun Fong material and then the Kali material. Now, when I say it's time to spar, oh, you can do whatever you want. You're allowed to do gun things when you're sparring, even though, because it's not Jeet Kune Do sparring at that, or, uh, Jun Fong sparring at that point, it's JKD. So you have to take some of these elements of, uh, you know, what's, was working for you or what you, part of it is what you like to do. The other part is obviously what works, you know, what, what is working for you, your, your movement, your capabilities. But, uh, I always find it weird that as Bruce Lee was putting together his art, he was getting influences because he was in the community with these different types of martial artists. Uh, black belts, experts, grandmasters, if you want to call them that, fighters. And he would, he would learn some stuff from them. He would, he would exchange some ideas and, and press his philosophy onto, uh, those different people. But you don't think he, maybe he picked something up that maybe he might go and work on for a month or two and then maybe integrate or discard. Who knows? Right? He, and I could say that that was his preference at the time. So, uh, we may not have to walk the same footsteps that Bruce Lee has done, but we should look at, you know, the, the trial and error of things, right? And then eventually I would say he kind of rounded out his system. But I, I'll be honest, I've never felt Jeet Kune Do was 100% a complete thing. Um, and I did go through a couple of different, uh, I guess iterations of learning what JKD was. For me, a young 19-year-old mind is not a wise one. Okay? So for me, I would say I had, uh, some closed-mindedness that I'm like, this is the best thing, everything else sucks. JKD, JKD.
Yeah.
And not realizing that, uh, there were a number of elements that I was missing out on. Okay. Uh, definitely didn't have the Jun Fong training. And I can say, I can say the exposure to their training. I, I trained with Paul Vunek's influence of progressive fighting systems. And it was good. Uh, it's, it's very, uh, uh, to the point in a lot of the stuff they do. Uh, stop kick, B U G, straight blast, headbutt, knees and elbows. And that's great. But after a few years, I, I just felt like, okay, what else is there? And then I would look outside, you know, I want something else for me. I can box, I can kickbox. And then, uh, maybe, uh, you know, for us, we had to introduce our grappling. I didn't learn from Larry Hartso, so I didn't get his grappling influence until later. But, um, you know, we were exposed to Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu. So we said, hey, that's gotta be part, that'll round out our lack of knowledge on the ground. Is that wrong? If there are stubborn JKD people who would say, no, you don't need Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu because you can't take me to the ground. Come on, we've proven that decades ago, that anybody with that mindset is gonna get taken to the ground and be out of their element and humbled. Hopefully humbled where they would learn the lesson. And then for Kali, I say it has weaponry in it. Okay? You move differently if you have a weapon in your hand. You understand the damage you can do depending on the type of training, but then you also learn how to, how to defend against a weapon attack. Okay? Nothing is guaranteed. A boxer could grab somebody's hand who's trying to stab him, just punch him with a cross. And you say, well, he didn't learn knife tapping, he didn't learn anything else. Yeah, but he had other attributes and abilities. But other people, you know, you, you know, you train Kali, that we get it because maybe there is a deficiency in Jeet Kune Do from the point of where Bruce Lee had kind of, I don't want to say left it. It's kind of a weird way to put it. But where he had disengaged a little bit because now he is going off in doing his movies. And then in Asano's teaching and his other instructors are teaching. And then they in turn say, you know, we'll look at something, they're gonna have influences. We're all just men. We're gonna look at something and go, wow, that's beautiful or that is not beautiful to me. Or that is necessary or unnecessary, right? So often I just think that's a Jeet Kune Do process to me. And, you know, I'm multi-art trained. I've trained Thai boxing extensively. I see the value there. Silat extensively, Savat, I'm, I'm pretty well ranked in that. And I can appreciate the art for what it has and it will lend back into, uh, better Jeet Kune Do performance for me. Okay? And the best example I can say, if I train Thai boxing, okay, uh, I do, let's say a one-hour Thai boxing session. And then the next hour is Jeet Kune Do. I feel heavy footed. I feel like I'm lumbering around a little bit. And, and I don't mean to make Muay Thai seem like it is just that. But for example, you know, they just had that stalking element to it. And it, and you're not bouncing around a lot, right? You could, I guess, but that's not the way I learned it. And then when I'm doing JKD, I switch this thing, I feel like I'm like just stalking. And so then I like to go maybe do Jeet Kune Do a little bit, then go to my Savat. Not that those are necessary, but what it does is it gets me in the mode of starting to bounce around. Savat's very light, you know, uh, hit and move. Don't, don't stand in the line of fire, you know, they won't trade shots like maybe Thai boxers would. So that for me helps me go get back into the Jeet Kune Do mode of being able to hit and run. Um, and that's just a, maybe if I just start JKD cold, I wouldn't have the Thai feel to it or the, the, um, Savat feel to it. But to me, you know, I'm not gonna disparage any of those arts. They've all helped me be better, you know? Whether it's in sparring or, you know, uh, just having fun. I mean, I, I think we all first started this stuff trying to have fun, right?
That's, that's still my primary goal.
Yeah. If it's not, then why are people here? You know, if they dread going to class, that's, that's when you're losing people, right? So if you make it a chore all the time, you know?
Yeah. But The mere simplicity, to me, the simplicity of it is this. Bruce Lee was interested in being well-rounded. And if you're gonna be well-rounded as a martial artist, there's empty hands and there's weaponry. And it ends there. It's a
There you go.
It's a simple
Wow. You say, you said it way simpler than I did, but yeah. Yeah. And I agree with that. I, I just feel, you know, um, in all my JKD training or Jun Fong training, I didn't, I, there was no weapons there. I've, I've got extensive curriculum, uh, different books and Asano notes. And I'm not seeing weaponry as part of a JKD or Jun Fong program. You know, if Bruce Lee picked up his weapons for his, you know, for his own training or whatever, that was for him. But he didn't, you know, wherever the curriculum evolved from, it just didn't have, okay, here's a knife, we're gonna kick the knife out of your hand. Okay, how well does that work? That's like a Hollywood thing. Maybe it's there, but I didn't see it. But there's more to it. As you know, if you train Kali, how, how long you been training now? 40, 40 years?
This is my 40th year. Yeah.
Well, congratulations, sir. Keep it going.
I was, I was
Yeah, that's awesome.
I was, I was very thankful that Sifu Inosano accepted me at age 10.
Wow. That's fantastic. I see what you did there.
I was real glad. Yep.
Yeah, there you go. How old am I? Yeah. Um, yeah, but, uh, so, so seeing what Kali has to offer, I say, you can't ignore this. If you do, I think you're just, you're ending up closed-minded and you, you heard it, you heard of the Dunning Kruger effect, right? You ever hear of that? Okay. Uh, I, I mean, I recently learned about it. I, one of my students actually posted something a couple of years back about it. But essentially what it is, is most people think they're better than they are. And we've heard this, uh, guys will watch UFC and they think they can fight and take out the whole bar just because they're like, that's me. So a lot of people, there's like this curve of knowledge where they, they think they're better than they are. But then on the flip side, there are people that are very good that don't think they're very good at all. Do you see? And it's kind of weird. So it's, it, obviously there's a spectrum, but then you have that high point where a lot of people, if they think they're good, because nobody wants to be wrong. Okay? And especially as you get older in life, we are becoming more stubborn. So if you didn't learn how to be open-minded, uh, up to a certain age, it's gonna be harder. It's like teaching an old dog new tricks. It, they're just gonna be stubborn so that when new information comes in, they ignore it or they, they shy away from it. And, and I already know everything already. Don't, don't tell me anything else. And that's a shame because the mindset of a Jeet Kune Do person should be open-minded, right? Where would Bruce Lee have done, have been with the art if he had five more years, 10 more years, 20 more years? It could have looked completely different from what he was doing. There are people who will argue that he would have moved completely towards grappling. Maybe. I don't know. Okay?
When, when it comes to those hypotheticals, and I said, I said it, I said it just, just earlier today. I think you can make your argument, but where's your evidence for that, for the argument? So where's, see, I, I accuse a lot of people, a lot of people of, um, projecting presentism onto Bruce Lee. You know, so we lived on and we were able to experience the, the Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu phenomenon.
Yes.
But we cannot, we cannot impose that on Bruce Lee because he didn't. So, so I say, if you're gonna analyze, fantasize, hypothesize whatever eyes about Bruce Lee, do it based on what he did say, what he did write about.
Yeah.
But they, but they seldom do that, you know? So if somebody ever said, well, he did have studies on Judo and Jiu-Jitsu and Aikido.
Yeah.
So it's safe to imagine, but you never hear it expressed that way. Because they, they, they just have this fantasy that's not based on anything realistic. And that's annoying. To me, that's annoying. I, I
It is a sense of stubbornness. Um, that's unfortunate. But you know, that's what I say, you go, it, it, they can believe that, but I don't have to subscribe to their, uh, point of view. I can just say, oh, that's what you do. Okay. That's fine. I'm doing this.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm moving in this direction. You can stay there. That's, if that makes you happy, I suppose, that's fine.
But I don't, I don't mind the different point of view as long as it's something that, that is based on intelligence.
Well, there's that, but also don't impress that upon me to make me feel like I'm wrong. I will have issue with anybody of any level who's telling me my JKD is wrong. I don't know. Who are, who are you to say that? I just don't think there's an authority to tell you that, um, you know, you're doing things wrong. I, you know, I'll spar with people and they're like, you drop your hands. And I say, well, I know to keep my hands up when I'm in trouble, but I, I keep my hands out because I'm drawn. That's, that's one of the five ways of attack. I want you to throw stuff at me and then I'm looking to move around and then try to take advantage. Um, but is that the structured, you know, stance? Is it here? No, I'm, I'm here. I'm moving around in a, in a more comfortable expressive way that, that's right for me. And then there's times I get caught. If I'm sparring somebody pretty good, they catch me. And then guess what? My hands come right back up. And then I'm like, all right, now I'm dealing with somebody who, who can, um, you know, kind of bring it to me. But I'm not gonna tell somebody, especially some of my students have been with me a while. If they're training 30, 40 years and they're fighting like this, I'm not, no, hands up. You know, a beginner, I go, hands up. I want their hands up because they get hit a lot. They don't have the head movement. They don't have the footwork. Not yet. They're working on that. So they gotta keep their hands up. But once they start to put all that together, so which fighting stance is right? Which one's wrong? You know, it's, it, you know, you're kind of splitting hairs there.
Yeah.
Um, based upon what I think it should be. You know, that's wrong. This is wrong. And I, I've been caught up in that too. You know, I've had my own, uh, I guess evolution as a martial artist where, you know, I'll look at something and go, that's not right. That's not right. And I go, well, who am I to say that? I may don't, I maybe not have the context of why they're doing the drill that way today. Maybe they're injured and they're just not saying so. Um, there's a, there's a many reasons. I think, actually, this is great because Ron and I have seen this video and I'm sure you've seen it, of a Silat guy going through the leg sectors where you kneel, right? So if you're working the Silat and you go to the sector, you're turning and you're working a clock around the body. So when he's doing this, he's like throwing elbows, but he's going down the one knee and then he's turning. And it almost looks like he's hitting the guys here behind him and it looks like he's hitting over here. And a lot of people didn't understand it. And of course, all the Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu guys who were in this form were ripping on it. They're like, this is dumb. Nobody fights like that. It'll never work. And I go, guys, you don't see what he's really doing here. He could be multiple, he could be facing multiple attackers. He went down and maybe simulated a, a leg weave here just to get that guy in the ground, hit him in the groin. And then somebody else is coming at him and he's covering, turning, and then readdressing this person. And I just think that that short-sightedness is because they don't have that experience. When is Jiu-Jitsu a multi-attacker art?
Never.
Yeah, you don't see it. And, and some, some of them are starting to do that. Like Larry Lindeman did something really cool, uh, at our last Jeet Kune Do summit, which was to pile three people on one person. And he's like, all right, now stand up. And similar to like a tactical stand-up that we do from Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, but he used the Turkish getup. Okay. Which is like the kettlebell stand-up, right? Which is a lot more solid. And he, uh, you might remember Cooper, uh, or at least know who he is. He, I trained with him a lot. He's in a lot of the videos I do. But he was the one that demoed this and these guys are piling on him. And of course it was a struggle. It's a fight. Three people laying on top of you, trying to pull your arms out from basing out and stuff like that. But it is a test. Put yourself in that situation and then go, where can I find training to help me address that? So at least you're not getting, uh, owned. Is it, is it held in Wing Chun? Maybe not. Maybe it's held in something like Silat. You know, has an answer for that from multiple attackers or even Kali. And then you say, I like that multiple attacker concept. And I know Vunek has worked on this as well. And bring that over into your Jeet Kune Do. Because curriculum-wise, you know, certain instructors may not address that. I don't know. Maybe they don't believe in it. And that's fine for them, but don't impose that back on other people who are working on it. And say, they're doing it wrong. That's stupid. That's stupid. You're, you might not catch the context. And I had to learn that for myself. And I guess it comes with maybe sticking my own foot in my mouth, right? It's possible. Uh, and then you just learn to kind of say, okay. Um, I know I don't know everything and I have to try and be that humble. Because there are times we all, you know, I know the answers and then you're wrong.
Right.
Okay. You learn to just maybe listen more than you talk. But I, that's what I think as far as if, if somebody's too fixed in their Jeet Kune Do thinking, I really don't think they're doing themselves any favors in personally developing their art. Okay? And then if they're an instructor, they are then taking that same, uh, maybe fixed mindset or stubborn mindset and putting that on their students. And the students, you know, look up to their teacher. So they think that's the right way to act and on it goes. So you may end up with a lineage, uh, you know, you know, 40 years from now that just has, you know, people who really think Jeet Kune Do is only this or only that.
Oh, it's already
And I feel it should be more open.
It's already happened, right?
And, and here's Oh, yeah. Well, I, I agree. I just don't wanna, you know, feel like I'm gonna name names or anything like that, you know?
Yeah. No, we, we don't have to because we know who they are. And they know who they are and they know that we know who they are, right? One of the best things that could ever happen to a Jeet Kune Do instructor for the cultivation of open-mindedness or even active-mindedness is Kali.
Yeah.
It's one of the best things.
Yeah.
I mean, when, when
Yeah. I, I would say there's, uh, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, no. There are so many things, right? Um, count-wise, for example, three count here, five count there and what have you, that I took the, the, an idea in the Kali and put it into the empty hand portion of what I teach, right? I personally, um, I, I hate having to ever use terms like JKD slash Kali, Kali slash JKD or whatever, right? I like to use the term Jeet Kune Do to refer to an all-encompassing well-roundedness as a martial artist, right? And so whatever, you know, even though the, um, do you remember, you've seen the different Inosano Academy designs? And at one point there was a design that was just an empty circle. It had all the other emblems around it, but then there was this empty circle. And that empty circle was representative of Jeet Kune Do, indicating that you could put into Jeet Kune Do whatever you need, you needed to. That to me is it, right? So having to, having to, to necessarily separate or whatever, I, I don't care to have anybody impose that on me. So to me, it's all Jeet Kune Do, right? But I wanted to still talk, I still wanted to, to, um, to tap your brain on this stuff because once again, you and the graphics.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Hold, hold that thought for one second. I gotta do one thing, just 10 seconds and I'll be right back.
Okay. Because they always have the best graphics for these events in Chicago. And it's so, it's so annoying because I don't have any talent when it comes to this kind of thing. I can just barely spell Kanba, you know, but.
All right, I'm back. Got me?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um,
I assume this is your design.
Yes. Yeah. We designed this, um, not, not me personally. I, I have a graphic designer, but, uh, and she does great work. Um, but there are times, like I, I was an artist in high school. And so I learned about design and layout a little bit and I was more of a, like a cartoonist. But then eventually I got involved with like, uh, different, um, design elements, right? Like how to put flyers together, things, things along those lines. And now I haven't done it to the highest level I would like to. And of course that takes time and effort to learn like, you know, Photoshop, um, to learn um, to learn, uh, you know, um, any of the illustrators, like illustrator, and I've used the uh free source version of that, like Inkscape and things like that. So the type of things that I've done, like when I used to work for Mars, is I would help them get flyers for their events. I would help uh um, some of the other local schools in the area help get just a better flyer than some of the things that they were doing. And then, of course, eventually we hired a a really good graphic designer who put together really exciting posters. And it's the same thing here. Initially, when I first started this, my graphics were a little simpler. But then, you know, I got this graphic designer who I can sit there and actually have design sessions with. I say, I like this layout. Let's do this, that. They're the ones that really puts it together. So I I'm okay with the layout part. But there's somebody else that actually does the drawing, the vectorizing and things like that.
Okay.
So and yes, it it costs. And that's uh, it is what it is, you know, uh, some people can go a cheaper route, uh, and that's fine. Sometimes you need to start there. But uh, when it when you know it's time to step up and you need to set an impression, you want to have better T shirts, better uh, you know, get a good logo professionally made and then uh, you know, and and you you kind of brand things and that's kind of what I'm about too. I'm an I T person, so I understand like how projects should be. That's my mindset runs like an I T guy, even when I'm teaching. So it has to have a sequence and a logic and an order. But um, when I think about branding, okay, because I I'm also into marketing and and trying to like get that business moving a little bit too, is, you know, you have a logo. Uh, use that logo properly at different places, get your color scheme correct, you know, and it's consistent. If you change the logo three times at three different things, it feels like you're running three different businesses. And I think people don't then gain an attachment to your brand. And I think that's that's part of it, you know, and I I'm not a huge brand. But I think everybody knows when they start hearing Wolf Martial Arts, they start thinking of me, even, you know, in Italy. They hear Wolf Martial Arts and they're like, ah, Randy. And I think that's cool.
Yeah.
You know, um, yeah, so it's it's a thing and I I was able to stick with it. I'll mention one thing about this too, which is kind of funny. Every time somebody comes up with a name for their school, right? Uh, and and I've given some advice on this. You have to have something meaningful. If you go off the cuff or just try to copy somebody else, just because they're doing something. And this is not, again, to disparage anybody, because everybody has their own process. But what has helped me adhere to this wolf brand, I guess, is that I felt that it had a good tie into my persona and my namesake, right? Which is really cool. So it was, for me, it was unshakable. If I had a hundred people that laughed at the name, like Wolf, there's no Wolf style of animal fighting or something like the Five Animal Kung Fu. There's no Wolf in that. I've heard that a million times and I just go, well, that's not why I have it. I have it more for the the spirit of it, or like the Wolf Pack mentality that we all watch each other's backs. We're all together in this, you know, we're not leaving anybody behind, things like that. So it was for me, it was unshakable. And I think that's an important thing that when you're creating a brand, you know, let's say you have a new instructor who wants to launch a business and they're brainstorming, thinking about it, make it meaningful. Sometimes it can be a bit personal. Sometimes it's it's what works for the region or what other influences they've had, you know, um, a great example, Links Academy of Martial Arts with uh Frank Cucci. You know, of course, they had a little bit of influence on me, you know, he had an animal. But his thing like with Links is linking, he would say, link practical uh protection with uh personal development. Right? So you're learning good techniques, but you're also developing your character. And he made that a big part of when he had that uh, at least that brand back when I was training with him. And he still links Academy, but everything that he had just kept that name. It just worked because it was unshakable to him. And the same thing when I developed the Wolf, it was unshakable. So you get the name, you get the logo, you create the brand and you stick with it and just keep promoting. You can change the logo, you know, over time. You know, but start somewhere, even if you gotta start cheap, you know, at least start.
Well, hey, man, listen, some of the some of the most successful people out there, ask them about their origin story. I know one guy, I I don't know if you ever heard the name Brendan Burchard. But Brendan Brendan did everything himself. Websites, um, the right, all the writing, everything himself. Until he never hired until he made his first million. And then he started, then he started hiring out, but he taught himself how to do everything.
Yeah, if you have the will, I'll tell you, there's a lot you can accomplish. You'll sit there and watch the YouTube videos or take the online course to learn some of these apps. And I had to do that too. There I watched plenty of YouTube videos to do things better.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's it's all, for the most part, it's all out there. So so two things I I gotta I gotta ask you about. Um, being an I T guy. So the first one, um, that means you're you're extremely organized. So what was the, you don't have to go into details, but what was the guiding organizational structure for your curriculum?
Like, okay.
Where 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 do you start? Why do you start there? And is it the same for empty hands and weaponry in terms of where you start and why you start there?
Yeah. So obviously, we can look at uh, when we're doing certain drills. Some drills can be so complex that you go, oh, I I can never do that drill. But a a keen eye or a trained eye will say, well, that is just a mix. Like if we say Kali, uh, uh, I don't know, twenty six count drill in Kali with different movements and running at each other. You start to see, if you understand the sequences, like we were talking about timing earlier, three beats, six beats, nine beats, and you start to see it's really just a couple of different drills put together. And then with footwork added and body turning and things like that. So um, you have to look at the fundamental components that somebody needs to have in order to build on. Okay, so obviously a fighting stance, obviously some basic footwork so they can have mobility. Basic hand uh placement for your weapons, right? You know, they don't want their Kali stick out here. Keep it in front of you. It's your shield, right? Um, knowing where to strike from, so they're not drawing it way back and striking here. All these are fundamental parts to make the later on drills uh move better or or work better for them. So when I write the curriculum, I think partly how I started, what did I learn first? Uh, or or what is um, you know, we're we're taking, if we're talking about beats, again, ten beats, I say, well, I teach two beats to begin with. Then the next level, they learn two more beats. Now they have four. And then the next level, they learn two more beats. Now they have six until they get to that part where the ten beats just work for them, okay? Four or five levels in. And that's the way that I saw it. So, you know, obviously, I'm I'm influenced uh quite a bit by, you know, my guru, Ron Bellicki. He actually has a a great source material in his curriculum for Jun Fong, which was something I really sought him out for. You know, I had nineteen years of previous J K D training, but I didn't have the Jun Fong material, which I got from him and his curriculum's outstanding there. Uh, and then I look at uh his Kali curriculum. I almost didn't want to train it. I was training a different Kali system at a time with uh a different instructor. And Ron, really Guru Ron, encouraged me to, he's like, come on, Randy, you know this, just test with me. And I did and I, you know, made it a few levels through and then it became where G Kundo, which is the head of Kali, because G Kundo is not as complex as as Kali. Kali has so many different areas, you know, um, because of the different weapons orientations, you know, the staff, stick and dagger, uh flexible weapons, you know, um. If you want to go into, you know, the projectile weapons uh or or throwing weapons even. Those are different areas of specialization that I like to have been exposed to, but it takes longer to to get that training and kind of, I guess, get your body used to that type of uh maybe weapons combination, okay? So uh, for me, it had to be balanced where like level one didn't have a thousand techniques and level two has five. You know, I know it's it's kind of, but I I just didn't want it to feel like it was a lot and then a little and then a lot and a little. I wanted it pretty consistent across the board. But I I'll say this, I introduced more of the weapons complexities even at beginner one. They're learning staff at beginner one. It's not even beginner one. I'm sorry. I I teach level one through ten. That so if you look at my curriculum, you're level one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. And then there's an apprentice, uh, an associate and then a full instructor. No micro levels between them. No, because I've seen the Inosano ranking, you know, there'll be, you know, uh, you know, apprentice or associate one or or things like that. And then senior associate and then full and senior full and all that. I don't I don't feel I want to hang on to people for twenty years or thirty years of training. I'd rather them go off, you're go and do your own thing within five or six years. You know, to at least get that the first ten levels. And then you might, maybe maybe you'd spend maximum ten years with me. If you like me, you'd stick around a little longer. But uh, you know, for the most part, I'm just saying, go go and be an instructor. Go be your own person. I think you're ready. And and hopefully, you know, we cultivate it in that timeframe. But uh, I think the curriculum's balanced. And I have gone back and forth where I took this and moved this over here. And I go, no, no, it needs to be over here. And and now it feels really comprehensive to me. And I'm testing it now. My students are going through more rank testing that they've done. It's about every six months. They have to get through a testing cycle for if they're really working hard, they may get a chance to double test. And it's not for the sake of racing through the curriculum. It is just that they are ready. They're they're very either, they they could have come to me with previous knowledge too. And I don't want to hold them back and say, no, you gotta be like the other beginner who has no experience. No. They might move a little a little quicker through some certain parts of the curriculum, but everybody has to do the work. So I've been ranked testing my students. We just did a rank test last week. Uh, four G Kundo, four students testing uh level one J K D. And then they're doing Kali this weekend, the same four people. And then I have more advanced students. I have uh one student going love doing level five Kali. And two other students do level three. So I'm teaching the different levels in this class, but what's nice is the curriculum, they they have the sheets and I go, okay, name a double stick drill. Everybody's doing it. And then it starts to break off. It becomes like the warm up. And then they break off. You're you're focusing on the material for your level. And then the more advanced people may work on the material that they need for their for their upcoming tests. So it's it's worked out well for me. I've seen enough curriculum, you know, from from uh, from, you know, what I've seen in what Ron has or, you know, Sifu Ron. And then uh, you know, Mark Halak or whoever, I've seen this, you know, uh, different different curriculum. But for me, I've I've input a lot of what I feel um is is very solid to have. And I try to consider myself a bit of a functional person, so it's not just looking good. Like posture is important. I mean, I'll give you just a quick example. I'll see people when they swing sticks, they're here and they go, they're leaning in when they strike. And I go, if you miss that, you're giving, you know, your yourself into the target for the counter hit. So my the posture is very important, you know, even as you're moving your body around, stay upright. I'm very relaxed. I don't feel rigid. Maybe to the outside observer, it looks like I'm being very stiff, but all I'm doing is not swaying into my techniques. And I think it's the same when when we kickbox. I I correct a lot of people. I I've worked with people who trained twenty years. And they're like, yeah, I've got footwork. Yeah, I've got movement. And then I'll say, okay, let's put that together though. And then all of a sudden it falls apart and I say, ah, because you did them separately for so long, you never really put those things together. Or I'll see them out of position or swaying a lot, or they do jab cross, they go one, two, and they're leaning on the cross, which means they're bringing themselves closer. If they miss that, they're presented as a hit as opposed to staying back and then having just a good body position. So I think that's like a big thing that's that for me is important because I spar a lot. Uh, you know, not to brag because I don't think it's a big, you know, I don't think it's anything to brag about, but I fought a lot when I was growing up, more than before I got into martial arts. I was always in fights at school. Just just, I don't know, maybe it's my big mouth or something. I don't know. And I would just get into these fights. And then I, once I started started learning martial arts, I didn't fight as much because I think I felt it wasn't worth it, or maybe I would hurt the person too much. Um, and then I so I I kind of almost put some de-escalation into it, but I spar a lot. And uh, with weapons or just, you know, kickboxing or whatever. And I want the functional side of what we do. And my students are required to spar as well. They have to spar everything. So at the end of their test, they have to staff spar, they have to stick spar. They're padded up.
Right.
Um, you know, I I'm not looking for anybody to walk away with injuries, but I want them to to appreciate this art for why it was why it was developed in the first place, because it was used for function. And because life is is kind of easy and we're we're more civilized, we don't fight that way with our neighbors or with our, you know, people down the street or whatever. We're not doing that. Uh, but the art was developed because of that, because of, you know, territorial incursions and whatnot. And they proved many hundreds of years ago that this stuff worked.
Works, right?
Yeah, it works.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Again, as an I T guy.
Yeah.
Chat G P T.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a cool, that's a cool subject. I actually was playing with that right around Christmas. Um, and I have a friend, actually a good friend of mine, who is working a lot of the A I art component of it.
Really?
Um, and he's really kind of done some fascinating things with it as he's learning it. And uh, so I'll 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 go two routes with that. So first I'll talk about my my experience. I was, I'm fascinated by it. Of course, I have a little bit of nervousness. I grew up watching Terminator. Right? And you're just like, oh, where is going to be that point where, you know, you're handing off a little too much trust into a potentially a system that you didn't foresee its learning that it would go, oh, by the way, it would be great to drop a nuke on you guys because you suck, you know, humans stink and we're just gonna wipe you out. I don't know. Um, I hope not. I hope they put enough safeguards. I've seen enough memes out there where they say, like, uh, they're gonna hire people to pull the cord on these server farms. So you gotta be ready for the signal. And I'm laughing. I go, yeah, that's probably a really important job. Once they get a little too smart for themselves. But um, there's definitely an evolution. So Chat G P T came out. Uh, they kind of just, it's a whirlwind in the I T world where, you know, Google had to come up with something quick. Maybe they were already working on it. I don't doubt. And then Microsoft, you know, so this, it it has a ton of potential for good and even more potential for bad. I don't doubt. So if you thought chatbots were a problem before, uh, it could be even a bigger problem moving down the road, but everybody needs to be educated on it to some degree. I I I think um, I'm about empowerment as an I T professional for almost as many years as I've done martial arts. I never wanted to own all the information. I want to empower the user so that they can do their job better, not always call me up every time they have a problem. So but with that, everyone should be educated on what A I is. And maybe we're over glorifying it to a certain degree, um, as we've seen all these different movies, excuse me. And then uh, now with with this A I art stuff, my friend is, he's a photographer. He's a, uh, he and I are both photographers. He's he's taught me quite a bit. And then uh, he does, he's getting into some videography as well. But uh, he's playing around with like taking photos or building three D models and then bringing them into this, you know, A I generated art. And he's come up with some fascinating things. His concern, uh, we talked about it the other day, was it'll put artists out of work.
Really?
You see? Uh, yeah. Um, I mean, let me put this in the in a simple way. Go into Target or I was just in Home Depot the other day. There is no checkout uh with the cashier at all. It is automated or you're self-service. Let's put it that way. It's self-service.
Right.
Okay, Amazon Fresh, it's more automated. Whatever you grab, it detects you grabbed it and then charges you already as you just walk, you grab it and walk out the door.
Yeah.
Right? So people, there's not, I I would say, okay, those people who would have normally done that job don't have jobs anymore. Okay, so now even my work, I'm a security uh analyst. So I'm reading through these logs and my boss feels really good about me looking through the logs and reporting to him saying, hey, you know, our environment's good today. But you know what else I need? I cannot read hundreds of thousands of lines to look for the one problem. I need a piece of software there to filter and maybe it is a smart app. I I'm not going to say A I, but it's smart enough to look for anomalies for me. So it makes my job easier. But at what point will it not require me? Because it's so automated that it will, it will detect something and then send it to my boss. I'm not the one looking at it anymore. You see? And then you have artists, people are going out there taking, you know, photographs with a cool background and putting it together, photoshopping. I mean, look what happened. I don't know if you have an iPhone. The new release of this iPhone allows you to cut the person out of the the foreground and remove the background. And other apps have been doing that for a bit. But it's always been like a problem when people want to do these photo collages is getting rid of the background. Now you've just tap it and hold it and then move it to a different screen. Things are getting smarter. It would require an artist to do that before, right? Somebody who knew Photoshop pretty well. But now it's not the same thing. So I think while it is helpful for like somebody who's a small business, as we talked about earlier, doing everything by themselves, it it makes it easier. What about the professionals that might get pushed out of an industry? I I don't, I I've got, not to be a doom and gloom guy, but there's a lot of like huge companies that have let go at least ten percent of their workforce in this past year, two through twenty twenty two. And it could happen again because of the economy. So I'm just saying, with A I, there's automation. Automation requires less workforce. Then you have more people not working. What are they gonna do? You know, some people told them to learn to go code, you know, and you go, okay, not everybody has the mind for that. That's why we choose our professions, because you have either a life for it or you have the mindset for it. I'm not a programmer. Just because I'm an I T doesn't mean I know how to program. I can look at some code for simpler things like scripts and understand it and modify it and make it work for me. and understand it and modify it and make it work for me. But I can't think about code compiling, building apps and things like that. It's not my brain. But then those same people can't do my job. They can't think like an engineer. They think like a programmer, two different mindsets, even though we're both in IT.
Yeah.
You know, and so, uh, you know, I can't go, if somebody tells me, go, go program, Randy, you're an IT, how hard is that going to be? I've tried. I've tried and I just can't wrap my head around the code. I, I would not be able to see anything in the matrix. I can't make sense. It's just lines, the squiggly lines. I can't see anything. That's me.
Yeah.
Um, but, but okay, you know, there are people that do that. But if I, you know, if you get worked out of your industry, like this AI art, photographers may not be as needed, you know, or, or graphic designers may not be as needed. And, uh, you know, so I mean, I just, there's good and bad to it, right? Just like with anything else. It's new.
Yeah.
People could make use of it or they could abuse it.
It is, it is fascinating. And, uh, my friends in the, um, my friends in the copyrighting industry. Some of them are a little bit worried. The others have realized immediately that there's not necessarily anything to be afraid of. It's, it's a tool and it can become one of the tools in their toolbox. Right? And I've tested it. I've tested it myself and, um, it's at the point now where I can tell if somebody answered through chat GPT, you can tell.
I got you.
You start to recognize the language, right?
Uh, yeah.
And so
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah. As soon as I started working with it, I, it got to the point where I very quickly realized that the sophistication level of its answer is commensurate with the sophistication level of your question to it. Right? And ultimately, I, I've been using it primarily for, for Jeet Kune Do. And so I am quite aware of its limitations because it gets a lot about Jeet Kune Do wrong. And ultimately I asked it a question and here's what it said to me. It goes, I can't get the subtleties and the nuances of Jeet Kune Do that a human could. Especially a human who spent time with Bruce Lee. That's what it said to me.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
That's good until it tells you you're doing it wrong. Then you should be worried. You go, oh, is he right? I don't know. Uh, but yeah, see, that's, that's an interesting part. Yeah. Uh, there's an old saying, it goes back to everything about computers, you know, garbage in, garbage out. But it's not the, that's the other thing. Don't let it, don't let one source be the be all and all of your knowledge of where you're obtaining information. You know, so if, if people think it's going to be a miracle working, uh, you know, piece of software. If you ask it the wrong questions, you're going to get the wrong answer and you'll, you'll be satisfied with that thinking. You answered the right question or asked the right question.
That's just lazy people. It's only lazy people who are going to be like, oh, now I don't have to do anything. AI can do it all for me. That's just, that's just lazy, um, dumb, dumb, dumb people.
Um, well, and there's foresight in that, right? Because people said, well, what if they use this to, for students to essentially get a paper written? Well, now they got signatures or thumb prints that they're putting on this stuff so that it would be shown that you did use a bot or an AI to write your reports. So they know they don't want it to be abused that way for people just to, you know, coast through school and not really learn anything. What, what use is that? It's, it's funny like with knowledge, right? You could, you could cheat on the test. Um, and you could, uh, you know, skate your way through maybe some, some, uh, homework assignments because either you're lucky or you copied someone's homework, whatever. Well, when it comes to the performance, and this is partly what I like about, you know, martial arts. When it comes to performance, it's obvious. I say, get out there and shadow box for 30 seconds and you know if they know their stuff, maybe even in 10 seconds. They could have, they could have asked the AI, well, how do I throw a jab? But they never did the repetition. So it's not quite the same thing. Uh, I mean, we've been seeing this with YouTube. People watch YouTube videos. I know that, I know this. And then you say, okay, let's get up and do it. And because they didn't train the body in their mind, in my mind, I visualize I can fly like Superman. I can't really do that. In my head, I think I can do a backflip, but then I really try it and I'm going to break my neck. I go, yeah, I really can't do it. Because I didn't train the body. The whole body has to be trained. It's a full coordination effort. Even just throwing a punch requires that. So, you know, I think, uh, yeah, it should not be the, the be all and all source, but I think it's going to evolve. I think it can be scary. I think it can be abused, but it can also be very helpful.
Yeah.
If I didn't make that point yet. Yeah.
It'll get better. It's in its infancy stages right now, I guess. And, and it'll get better, um, you know, but, um, I'm not going to give it high marks until I ask it about myself and it's accurate. There is no Dwight Woods who trained with Bruce Lee until 1993 and then became a student of Dan Inosano's. There is no such person. Uh, that's what it said.
Is that what it reported back?
That's what it said. Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I, I run, I run a school called the Rebel Academy in New York.
Oh. Yeah.
Right?
You're all over, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So all that, all that tells me is that my, my, um, online presence is not, um, it, it, it's not prolific enough.
Yeah.
For AI to pull the, the accurate information. So I got, I got work to do. Anyhow, let's, uh, wrap this up. Tell people where to go to get all the information they need on the Chicago Kali Summit.
Okay. So my website is wolfmartialarts.net. Okay. If you go, uh, forward slash C Kali S, that stands for Chicago Kali and then S for summit 2023. That's the URL. Okay? Um, and we could probably post it after this, get, get the link there. There's registration options there for one, two or three days. Okay? There's a Facebook event where it's been, uh, it's be, there's an ad promotion going on for it, but there's a Facebook event under Chicago Kali. So if they want to look that up, you'll see the event underneath Chicago Kali. Uh, the event is pretty much a month from now, for the most part. We have, uh, March 31st, which is a Friday and then April 1st, no joke, okay? No fooling. Uh, and then April 2nd. So that's, uh, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So it's a good three day event, uh, very affordable, you know, uh, the instructors, I didn't have to fly out. Like I said, they're, they're all local. So it, it helps keep the, the cost down for the attendees, um, that I can have these people there. And then it's a lot of training. And I'm trying to really work through the 12 areas of Kali to give at least, you know, I can't cover everything. It's not possible. It would take weeks and weeks of, of consist, you know, non-stop training to get through it all, but at least I can, uh, ignite, uh, some of the ideas going on, you know, like I want to present, as, as I shared with you before, the Sinawali structure. How to get 4,096 patterns, right? And people are like, wow, that's so many. Yeah, I don't remember them all. They're not stored up here. I just know eight by eight. And as you do the math and expand that out, you end up with that many and it's really fascinating. And there's more than that too. That is just a baseline. So, uh, I want to impress that onto people, how they can become creative in the, in the art without being spoon fed everything. But there's a lot of drilling. I want to have people, I almost did a tournament this time around. I really thought about it, but I just felt it wasn't quite a good fit to do it so soon. I want to kind of build up a little bit more, uh, Chicago Kali minded people. And then we can have a tournament. I definitely want to do that. And I have a good person that could help us run a really solid tournament. Um, and keep track of the bracketing and all that other stuff. So, uh, yeah, uh, you know, we got four different instructors over three days and we're going to have a lot of training in Kali and some C-Lot as well.
Nice one.
Yeah. So come on out and train with us. It'll have a lot of fun.
Sounds like a plan. All right, my friend.
All right. Thanks so much. It was good to see you and I hope we can talk a little bit more soon.
Oh yeah, we will, we will. All right.
All right.
Have a great evening.
Thank you. Take care.
I'm off to bed.
All right. Have a good one.
Okay, take care.
Take care. Bye.
Okay folks, that was Jeet Kune Do Dialogues special session with, uh, Randy Seordia. I call him one of the four Musketeers of the, uh, Chicago Jeet Kune Do and the Chicago, uh, Kali Summit. Be sure to check out the information that, um, he gave us and I'll put the links in the description for you and what have you. Okay? So follow me on Twitter at Dwight Woods and on Instagram at Dwight D Woods. At paypal.me/unifiedMAMiami. The Jeet Kune Do Journey Volume One is available. PayPal.me/unifiedMAMiami. Also another way to, uh, support the show. You already know about, um, find us at jkdrebel.com. Click on the Rebel Gear link. That's where you see stuff like this. The, uh, JKD Notables Coffee Mug, um, but also his garments, T-shirt, sweatshirt, long sleeve, short sleeve hoodie, all that good stuff. The other way is to consider becoming a sponsor of the Jeet Kune Do Dialogues over on the YouTube channel. Um, this might not be easy enough for you to see here, but this is, but just go to the Jeet Kune Do, uh, Dialogues channel on the YouTube, click on the join link and you'll see the different, uh, memberships and the different perks that are available to you there. Coming up on Friday is, uh, episode 256 with, uh, Steve Carriage of, uh, Bruce, BruceLeeForever.com. This is going to be a good one, right? And, uh, so that should be at the regular 6:00 PM Eastern Time. So until then, this is Dwight Woods, the Jeet Kune Do Rebel signing off. You guys have a great weekend and I'll see you soon.